I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, May 13, 2019, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were just a few items in the table file.
Yes, this evening, there were several personnel items in the table file, including appointments, some corrections, an increase, decrease, change in assignment, and a couple of resignations or retirements. And then we also in the table file have the proposed district youth council membership for the 2019-20 school year.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. If there's no objection, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comments. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman.
Well, this evening, we're going to start with a recognition of Isabella Clowery, who is going to come forward, and she's going to share her national championship Poetry Out Loud, a portion of her performance. So let's welcome Bella to the stage.
We'll get it. Okay. "ABC Darian Requiring Further Examination of Anglican Seraphim Subjugation of a Wild Indian Reservation" by Natalie Diaz. Angels don't come to the reservation. Bats, maybe, or owls, boxy, mottled things, coyotes, too. They all mean the same thing: death. And death eats angels, I guess, because I haven't seen an angel fly through this valley ever. Gabriel? Never heard of him. Know a guy named Gabe, though. He came through here one powwow and stayed. Typical Indian. Sure, he had wings, jailbird that he was. He flies around in stolen cars. Wherever he stops, kids grow like gourds from women's bellies, like I said. No Indian I've ever heard of has ever been or seen an angel. Maybe in a Christmas pageant or something. Nazarene Church holds one every December, organized by Pastor John's wife. It's no wonder Pastor John's son is the angel. Everyone knows angels are white. Quit bothering with angels, I say. They're no good for Indians. Remember what happened last time some white god came floating across the ocean? Truth is, there may be angels. But if there are angels up there, living on clouds or sitting on thrones across the sea, wearing velvet robes and golden rings, drinking whiskey from silver cups, we're better off if they stay rich and fat and ugly and exactly where they are, in their own distant heavens. You better hope you never see angels on the rest. If you do, they'll be marching you off to Zion or Oklahoma or some other hell they've mapped out for us.
We want to thank Bella for sharing that very powerful piece of poetry with us and for the work that she did to place first in the National Poetry Out Loud competition. That's of not, you know, of 350,000 competitors. So think about that for a moment. Sitting among us tonight is a person who pursued her art and shared it with the nation and was declared the champion. And Bella is a senior at Arcadia Charter School, and as you know, we're a very proud authorizer of Arcadia Charter School. And so when Arcadia wins, we feel like we're a little bit of a part of it. And so we want to thank you for representing our community so well, and not just on that national stage, you know, during that competition, but with all the press that you've gotten afterwards. You have been nothing but total class and generous with people and how you have shared, let them share in your championship. So thank you for sharing that with us tonight. And I do, this is an unusual piece, but it's not every day we have a one in 350,000 person who won a championship with that. So if board members have any questions for Bella about her experience, I think she'd be, I'm sure she'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about how she got there or any of the experiences she took away from it. We have an expert right here, too, so we don't.
I'm just curious how the, how the national competition works? If you could just describe it a little bit and what it felt like to be part of that?
Yeah, so.
I'm going to the podium, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We're going to shift you, yep.
So I compete along with 53 people, one from every U.S. state, and then Puerto Rico, the Virgin Islands, and District of Columbia. So there's 53 people, and there's like two rounds. We get flown there for three days, and it was a really long and anxiety-filled three days, but it was super fun.
Where is there? Was it Washington?
Yeah.
Other questions? Board members have? Rob?
So I've been really privileged to watch you do this for the past four years, and I know that you've worked with some really good teachers at Arcadia with Scottgrave and Bob Gregory Bjorkland, and they've been doing this at Arcadia for?
14 years.
14 years, yes. So could you say a little bit about working with your teachers on this?
Yeah, so I've worked with them really closely the past three years, but this year I want to do it more independently. But they have been really great coaches and like been able to sat down, and you as well have also sat with me and gone through my poems and what we think they mean and how we can best do that. But this year, I tried to do it more independently. I took them and I kind of took myself out of the equation of the poem and just figured out how I can best embody the words and the meaning with my body and voice.
Other than working kind of independently, I guess, talking about, thinking about the poems that you chose, I mean, how was this year different for you?
Yeah, so this year, there were a lot more native poets added to the poems we could choose from. So I chose, that poem was by Natalie Diaz, and then I also had a poem by Joy Harjo, which are two authors I really connected with, both Indigenous women, who just really took like beautiful feelings that I think a lot of Native people share, and being able to just express that really in a wiseful way. It was really easy to connect with those two poems, and my third poem was about not killing bugs, and I also identify with that, so.
Thank you so much.
Other questions? Board members have?
So the Northfield News did a wonderful story on you, Bella, and I was able to read it. And for those who are interested, the Northfield News does have the link to the YouTube video in which you can hear Bella do Thoughtless Curiosity, which is, was amazing, and you just said, oh, it's about killing bugs, but it's really, really, it's also just an amazing piece. So if anyone has a chance to get onto the Northfield News website and pull up that YouTube video. And then one other I thought interesting when I saw you in the competition, you had such interesting jewelry on, and you have that same necklace on this evening, and you have a Native American beading jewelry business as well, so, and you're heading to Bullay College in Wisconsin. So we wish you all the best, and I think at some point, we can all say we knew Bella when she was here before the board. So thank you for your time and good luck in all that you do. You obviously will be a huge success. Thank you.
Thanks. I have one more announcement this evening. And on Friday, May 3, the Northfield community gathered at Northfield Middle School from 5:00 to 8:00 PM to celebrate the Cinco de Mayo celebration for our community. I'm really pleased to share with you that over 625 people attended the celebration and nearly $3,000 was raised at the event. And just to remind folks, the Cinco de Mayo celebration raises funds to support scholarships for our Latinx students. And so again, I've been to this celebration, I think, each year since it started, and it just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and really some great opportunity for, to see some local students performing and engaging with the community, some wonderful food, some great games, and just a wonderful celebration with our Latinx community about Cinco de Mayo. So again, thanks, Erin Bailey and some other folks from community services got the event organized, and so we're grateful for you for that. So another great Cinco de Mayo event, and that is the total of the announcements and recognition this evening.
Board members have other things to add? Yes, Rob?
I just wanted to add that on Wednesday, the Honors Art Show is opening at the Northfield Arts Guild, and I think 20 Northfield High School students are going to be represented in that show, and there's an opening reception on Friday night, Friday evening. And I think there's also a art exhibit of Greenville Park, students' art in the, on the second floor of City Hall. And I also found out that another Northfield High School student, Isabel McCallum, won an honorable mention in the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, so we've got lots of good art going on in Northfield.
Yes, we do.
I just had two quick things. Of course, acknowledging we're coming off of prom weekend and just really acknowledging that it is, you know, we celebrate it every year, but we do have to thank our community that comes together to make it such an amazing weekend. First, starting with the mock crash, and I won't name everyone involved, but there was community members and agencies and organizations and parents and planning committees and volunteers and so many people that came together for mock crash, and then, of course, the after-prom party for all the students. So I know we're the envy of a lot of other communities in the way in which we all come together and make sure that it's a really memorable weekend, but it's also a very safe weekend for, for all of our students. So we really appreciate our community's support there. And then just a quick reminder, tomorrow at Northfield Middle School is the Career Day. I know board members have stopped in before to see that amazing event, pulling in John Stens, who works with pulling that together, and the number of our businesses that come and present to students, but it's all very interactive, and it basically takes over the Northfield Middle School parking lot and the gym. And so anytime board members would be able to stop by tomorrow, they will be there all day. So, and fortunately, it appears it will be a really nice day, so we thank them for that. So I think that's it, then.
I think those are our announcements and recognitions.
Let's move on, then, to, we'll move on to items for discussion and report. Our first report for the evening will be done by Hope Langston, Director of Assessment Services, in which she will talk about the 2018 graduation report data for Northfield Public Schools. Welcome, Hope.
Good evening, everyone. It feels a little bit strange to be talking about the 2018 class in May of 2019, and those results were delayed this year. We hope to be back on track next year for a February release. Where am I pointing, Bruce? There we go. We're going to focus tonight primarily on our four-year graduation rate. The Minnesota statewide goal is there. 90% of students will graduate by 2020, and no single student group will fall below 85%. So it's an ambitious goal across the state. I'm not going to read these to you, but I just want you to know that one of the things that they did change was the identification of student demographic groups. They used to do a snapshot freshman year, and then they decided that they were going to change that, so if you're, if you're any of those groups listed on the first bullet at any point during your high school career, you will now be counted in that demographic group, which is why we have seen an increase in the number of students in those demographic groups compared to historical numbers. And then just some things that I'm going to reference later, some of the rules that were implemented under ESSA, including this one regarding dropouts. And this is only pertaining to students who drop out and are coded as a dropout, that they will be counted as a dropout against the school that they attended the longest during high school. So MDE is tracking that, and you're going to see why that's important as we move through the presentation. Okay, so this year, we did see a slight increase in the, the school district four-year graduation rate, and we landed at 91.9% of our students at the ALC and the high school graduating in four years. You, you should also know, and it's in your narrative, that these cohorts are identified freshman year. That becomes sort of key in record-keeping, because we need to keep track of where all these students end up. So the Northfield slight uptick, and then the state hitting its highest graduation rate in history. So a win for the state of Minnesota. And they landed at 83.2. It's hard to read from here, but you have it in your packet. Then we move on to demographic trends, and here I've, I've just plotted our, our two largest demographic student groups, which would be our FRP, Free and Reduced Lunch Students for the District, and then our Hispanic Student Cohort. The solid lines represent Northfield trends, the dotted lines represent the state trends. And you can see that in 2000, for this class of 2018, we did have a nice recovery of both of those student groups after a drop in graduation rates the prior year. So one of the things I wanted to talk about was this categorization, because every student who is in a graduation cohort, identified their freshman year, is going to land in one of these categories. They either graduate, they either are continuing with their studies, they drop out and are coded as we know they dropped out, or they're unknown. We don't know what happened to them. And I, and I raised these four categories tonight because I think it's important for everybody to understand that when you look at the trends in those categories over time, the, the group that most impacts our four-year graduation rate is that continuing group. And the way that the legislation is written is that that will include students who are sped students and can stay in school till they're 21, but they're counting against our four-year graduation rate, or students who simply need more time to complete their high school requirements, which, yes, while we would like every student to graduate in four years, we understand and recognize that some students need more time, and yet that counts against our four-year graduation rate. So you can see, I just wanted to, to show the percentages there so that you can see that those numbers, you know, do play in into that four-year rate, even though the continuing kids are actually in school, which is a good thing. So moving on, this, this one, easier to read in your packet, but basically what you're seeing is that same trend, but compared to the state average for those groups, for those categories. So the graduation rate, which is the maroon solid Northfield, and the maroon pattern bar, which is the state graduation rate, we want to be higher than the state for that category. But then the other graduation categories, continuing, dropout, and unknown, are the smaller bars. Again, the pattern bar would be the state average, and the solid bar would be Northfield's. And as you can see, we have fewer continuing, fewer dropout, and fewer unknown students as a percentage of our graduating, graduation cohort compared to the state. So those are all good things. I just think that, at least for me and learning about graduation, along with the people who work super hard on this, shout out to Chris Nesset and Darrell and Mary Huberg and Lori Kristofferson and other people at the high school who really are tracking every single student. And, you know, this is, this speaks to them. We, we have to be really accurate in our record-keeping, and in fact, when we get, get the report back from the state, the student-level roster, if they are sweeping, you know, other high schools across the state and pick up one of our students with their Mars number, so we thought they moved elsewhere, because that's what they told us, but they actually enrolled somewhere else in Minnesota, we're going to get that hit if they're still continuing. So record-keeping is key, and I really applaud the efforts of everyone in the district to, to make sure that we're recording things accurately. So moving on to the school-level results, you can see that Northfield high school rates are high, and so it's kind of hard to improve on, you know, 96, 97%. But that, so we did see a tiny decline in Northfield High School's overall rate, but a significant uptick in the Hispanic graduation rate, and, and then a slight decline in the FRP rate. I wanted to talk just a little bit about our student demographic groups, primarily because the FRP rate will average 80 to 90 kids in a cohort, and Hispanic cohort generally mid-20s to low-30s. And when you get cell sizes that are that small, any changes of even one or two students can really swing that graduation rate, and we did see that play out. I call it also the perfect storm. If you happen to have a year where you did have a lot of continuing and you did have a lot of unknown and a lot of dropout, that is going to impact your four-year rate. So the ALC, you know, we've, we visited with you earlier this year on the ALC situation because under ESSA, any school with student graduation rates, student group graduation rates of less than 67% were identified as in need of support. And our ALC fell into that category for these two demographic groups, all student and white student. And what they did was they took the 15, 16, and 17 graduation rates and averaged them, and if they were less than 67%, then you were, you were a recipient of additional support. So we have been working with the Regional Center for Excellence, and, you know, we did present that, that work to you earlier this year. But I want, what I want to point out here is the 2018 rates, while they recovered nicely, the, the all-student rate increased to 62.5%, and the white student rate to 69.2, they are not high enough to get us off that list. So we have to have a three-year rolling average of 67% or higher, unless the legislation changes, and at this point, we're not hearing anything about that happening. So what's, what's going to happen this year is the 2015 rate will drop off, and they're going to recompute a three-year average of 16, 17, and 18, and so on, moving forward. Everybody understands that there are a lot of ALCs on the list and receiving support right now, but we're going to, we're going to use it as an opportunity to learn more and, and improve what we do, so that's how we're moving ahead on that. Bright spots. Of the 117 public high school, public school districts with 10 or more Hispanics in a, in a graduation cohort, we were number 15 this year, which is really fantastic. And, and the ALC graduation rate is well above the state average for ALCs. So when we get a state average, they typically will combine, well, they do combine ALCs and high schools and charter schools, and that's that state average. But you can peel away to just the ALCs using their list of approved ALC programs across the state. So that was a win. And I think that's all I have for you. It's a short one tonight, so I'll entertain any questions.
Board members, questions, comments? Ellen?
So I'm curious more about, I was talking to Dr. Hillman about the flyer that we all got in the mail, and thinking about the graduation rates and then the other measures that we're using sort of at the high school level to think about what success looks like for students. And so when you look at the graduation rates, Hope, how do you look at those and then some of the other measures?
So are you thinking about kids who are needing more time or all students?
So, I mean, I guess I was, what we had in the flyer was, well, I think it was all students, but then it was the, if you want to talk about the conversation we had about...
Yeah, I think more looking at, Hope, is talking about not just when we think about the graduation rate and then we think about the college readiness measures through either the ACT or some of the other pieces that we shared. Would you just talk about how you see those balancing? Am I catching here?
Yeah, right. So I think across the state, our graduation rates are rising, and there's a little bit of controversy surrounding that, kids, are kids graduating with the skills they need. So we, we see kids graduating that might not show us college-ready on a metric like the ACT, but I think the research would support that the graduation piece weighs in more in the short term for these kids than that ACT piece. So what is amazing to me is the personal level at which these kids are tracked, and I, I really did not know that until we started really digging into our own record-keeping. But every single kid is looked at individually to make sure that they have every possible chance to graduate, and I think it's, it's even more targeted than, than what we do to get kids ready for the ACT. You know, we have a state testing day, everyone has the opportunity to take it, but we're not really providing like recovery courses for your ACT, where we are, we are offering that for credit recovery and through Odyssey, where if you're behind in credits. And it, and I think, I can't say enough great things about the collaboration between the ALC and the high school in working to get every kid to be part of this four-year graduation cohort. So we do look at all the metrics, but I think we know that having kids graduate is, is key. And then we can work on ACT and some of the other testing metrics. Does that get at what you were asking?
Yeah, a little bit. And then Dr. Hillman and I were talking about, is it the AccuPlacer?
AccuPlacer, yeah.
And so I was thinking about with Odyssey and all the work that's being done to ensure four-year graduation rates, we think that that would really help with that piece, because we, you know, the graduate that potentially, well, they might not show up in the ACT as all four-ready, but they might be less likely to need any sort of remedial coursework, because they've done some of that work with Odyssey and the extra help.
Yes.
So I was thinking that some of that might...
And I think we'll be visiting you soon to talk about that as part of the achievement and integration.
Like in about an hour?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, kind of like that. So you raise a really good point, and we, I just actually was meeting today about the AccuPlacer. I don't know enough, I don't know enough about it at this point to speak to it, but I do know from my now-broadening research on it that it's much more diagnostic than an ACT. So for, for some of our kids, it makes a lot more sense for them to start with that, because that's going to allow some people to intervene with some pretty prescriptive things. And then we are also learning, due to the great work by Carrie Duba, that the content mastery is, is huge in helping kids be ready to be successful on the ACT, in addition to getting the credits they need to graduate in four years.
Now, if I might just add a couple of things. I think as we explore the AccuPlacer, so when you think about what does college or career readiness mean, right? Because our, what is our end goal? What's our compelling why? Our compelling why is that we want every student who graduates Northfield High School to have a choice about what they pursue when they leave here. So to make sure that we provide students maximum choice, we need them to both be college-ready and credit-ready, and not that a person has to choose to go to a highly selective four-year school or a two-year school or enter the workforce. We think it's our job to ask them, what are their hopes and dreams, and how can we make sure that they are ready to pursue them? So a single measure anymore is probably not appropriate to really determine success. So the traditional, the traditional number that a lot of colleges use is the ACT. We all know that, right? That's the traditional model for many four-year schools. The AccuPlacer is something that any student, in my understanding, who is going to pursue education at a two-year community college or technical college takes, at least, at least takes upon enrollment there, and that's a determining factor of whether they have to take non-credit-bearing courses, remedial courses, which if we, when we are sending students to those schools, if they are having to take remedial courses, it is fair to say that we have not helped get them ready, right? I think there's a reason... I think there's a reasonable way to look at that and say that. Now, Hope raises a really important point because the graduation rate, what research would say, also is a very important piece in that readiness. And then there's a, an emerging, maybe it's not emerging, but an area of research that is actually identifying high school GPA as equivalent or potentially even more predictive than some of these other diagnostic tools that we've had. So, I think all along, we have always said, we don't ever want to rely on one measure because you all should remember that your high school MCA score can also get you past any remedial coursework, um, at a two-year or four-year college in Minnesota.
At a Minskew school.
At a Minskew school. So, as we continue to evolve and identify what are better measures, you know, for college and career readiness, we want to make sure that we're looking at a number of things, including some of the things that we're going to see tomorrow at the Business and Technical Career Trade Fair. There's a number of things that we're going to see tomorrow that aren't going to be available on a test, right? But you need both because if you really want to have choice, you need to have the academic skills to pursue a college degree should you want to. And if not, we needed to provide, provide you an opportunity to how can you gain those technical skills or the support that you need to follow some other path after high school. So, the graduation rate is great news to celebrate for Northfield. It's wonderful. And actually, one of the things that I'm proud of is that continuing rate. And even though we do frame the continuing rate as something that may not be great for the gold standard of the graduation rate, we don't give up on kids. And we've taught kids not to give up on themselves. So, just because they didn't meet some arbitrarily set finish line, they still get the support from us as they move forward. So, while I'm incredibly proud of the high graduation rate, I'm also proud of that number of students who trust us enough to continue.
And I think we really see that play out at the ALC. And I actually wrote a couple of student stories down here because this is in fact what we're dealing with when we deal with record-keeping. There was a student who was enrolled at the ALC from January 3rd to February 1st, okay? A month, dropped out, but it counted against the ALC because that was where that student had spent the longest in their high school career. One month. There's other kids who come to the ALC and even at the high school who, who are there for, you know, two or three weeks, um, and then are marked as continuing because they've had, have a Mars record somewhere else. So, the record-keeping is tricky and we do our best to, I mean, kudos to Darrell to track every single student and what happens to them. But I think Matt's right. Some of these kids just, for whatever reason, cannot finish in four years. And it is a huge win that they come back to the ALC to, to finish their coursework. So, the fact that our continuing numbers are high, to me, is a win. If we were seeing that number in dropouts or unknowns, it'd be a whole different situation. But we know that these kids are continuing their education, so...
And when you look, we, we could have gone into the five, six, and seven-year graduation rate that they also provide us. And when you look at the six-year rate, right? I mean, the, the rates...
All of those, yes.
Yeah. So, that means that, that additional support is helping students finish that graduation, those graduation requirements, which is so important for their future, as Hope has alluded to a couple of times.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Excellent. Other questions coming? No.
The last sentence on the first slide is confusing for me.
All right. Let's, this one?
Yeah.
This one? That one?
Yes. It says, uh, last, oh, third line from the bottom, "A student who continues their education past their senior year or whose final situation is known and still included as a non-graduate." I don't understand that.
So, this is directly from M.D. legislation. So, if you have to read it like five times.
That explains a lot.
That's true. So, what they're saying is if they are not a dropout, right? So, they're not a graduate, they're not a dropout. They're either in the continuing or the unknown category.
What's confusing for me is the phrase that "their education passed their senior year."
Right, so we...
Is it during the senior year?
Nope. So, that would be someone who, who, in our continuing category, who didn't have enough credits to graduate. So, came back the next semester or summer to continue gaining credits. They will count against our four-year rate, but they would then be included in our five or six or seven, depending on how long it takes them to graduate. So, it's anybody who's not in the graduate category and not in the dropout category, they're in that final sentence.
Use it again. I put that a little comment in parentheses.
I will use, I will do that, Noel. Thank you for that feedback. Because it is, it's confusing.
Amy, you have a question, comment?
I have two questions.
All right.
All right. First one is, what sort of additional support is given to the ALCs? Is it, because that sounds like a very positive thing, um, and I'm wondering if it is positive or if there's a downside to it.
Um, well, we, Darrell and I presented, I forget when it was, but about the plan that we had to submit to, to the Regional Center for Excellence. So, basically, um, there's an improvement plan that has to be put in place. And, um, I would say that we have chosen to look at it as an opportunity. And in fact, Darrell's now being called by other ALCs because they're sending his name out for different things that we're doing here as examples, for exemplars. But I think what, what is really good about working with that team, we have a really good advocate, um, and I think they just help us think about our data and outcomes in a different way. So, I think the benefit is being able to collaborate with other ALCs across the state in a similar situation and then also using, um, the people in place just to help us think about things in a different way. So, I would say, yeah, it's, it's paperwork, right? But it is a, it is a positive thing.
Okay. And I'm glad to hear that. My second question is, are there some students, maybe ones who are like severely learning-disabled or something, who just will never graduate?
So, what happens to those students, um, they would go enter the STEP program when they, when they finish their senior year, and then they're eligible for continued education up until age 21 when they would graduate.
And I think the important part there, Amy, is that a student's IEP team by law can set or modify graduation requirements for them. Right, Sarah? Yes. So, the IEP team can identify and say, you know, this student, because of the nature of this disability, needs additional time past what would have been their traditional senior year for functional life skills, kinds of things. But you'll also see some other individual education plans that will define what the graduation requirements are for students who do graduate in a regular four-year timeframe. So, any student in special education, that individual education plan team, which is made up of special education teachers, administrators, uh, parents, um, and other professionals, they have an opportunity collectively to say, this is going to be the bar for this particular student. And we think that that's important because when you have qualified for a disability, we're required to modify and, and adjust the curriculum and adjust the, some of the, um, benchmarks for you in terms of to be able to finalize your graduation requirements, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, that's really good. So, it's really conceivable that you could have 100% graduation rate. I mean, it's, it's possible.
Yeah, I, I think it is possible. In fact, what you will see is in, especially in some smaller school districts, you will see a 100% graduation rate.
Yeah.
I mean, you will see it, and for example, there was a year that a district just to our south and east with about 105 graduates, they, they hit 100%. And of course, having a smaller N is both good news and bad news because in that year, if you have an issue with three or four students, you are now dropping down, you know, substantially lower. And so, it can be, it can be problematic in that way. Uh, but yes, it is conceivable, though I will be straightforward with an, with a N the size of our graduating class, the likelihood of that here is, um, it's just probably not practicable.
Well, in this year alone, seven of those students who didn't graduate were STEP students. So, that, that's, to me, that, those should not be included in that continuing category, but they are. And that's the way the legislation is written, but those students have a, have a right to continue their education and, and are doing so. It just happens to count against our four-year rate.
And if anyone, you know, we are a part of a consortium, the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative, and the STEP program or 18 to 21-year-old program is housed in Faribault. And it's a wonderful program and every year we get, I get invited to the STEP graduation. And I'll make sure that Anita gets that graduation date out to you. And if anyone would like to accompany me to that, it's really a great celebration. It's, it's different, um, in terms of, uh, you know, how it's celebrated because it's just a smaller, much smaller group and it's from four different high schools. So, you know, each, each graduate wears the rope from their high school. It's a very special event for people's families. And so, if anyone would like to attend the STEP graduation with me, I'd be happy to take you along because it is a very cool event. And yes, they have the ability to go to school until age 21, and yet the state is saying, well, we're telling you that they have the right to do that, but we're going to count that against the four-year graduation rate, which is one of those things that it sounds great in a conference room at 12:30 a.m. when you're trying to bring a bill to closure, but doesn't really practically work out.
And I also would say that, and Matt, Matt says this as well, every student that enters the ALC has a significant risk factor, one or more. So, if you think about those kids' trajectory, they were, they're not expected to graduate. So, every student that we graduate from the ALC is a huge win. Um, and they graduated 25 kids this year. Those were 25 kids who, who were not projected to graduate. So, I think, I think it's that bigger picture of, of looking at them as students and not the data point on that graph necessarily.
Well said, as always, Hope. Um, any other questions or comments? Just one parting comment. You know, one thing we've learned about having Hope Langston here is that she always is so willing to applaud everyone else's efforts and it's really great when we can look at you and say, we applaud your efforts for everything you've done.
Thanks.
The way you've worked with Darrell on the, on the challenging, you know, numbers they had and, and the requirements they needed to, um, continue to try to improve. And you were right there with him, um, every step of the way. So, um, just, you know, in addition to everything else you do. So, anyway, we applaud your efforts.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, we will move on to our second item for report. We have, um, Director of Child Nutrition, Stephanie Stromme, and she will be here to, um, present the 2019-20 Proposed Child Nutrition Budget. And we don't see Stephanie often, just really once a year, so we're looking forward to having you here.
Thank you for inviting me in to speak with all of you tonight about the, um, child nutrition budget, but also to tell a little bit about what's been happening in our program this year and what we anticipate to happen next year in the program. Tom, um, since you're new here to the school board, I just wanted to mention that the child nutrition's mission is that we will provide quality nutritious meals that support the growth and development of our students to fuel their learning. We understand that as the child nutrition program, we share the responsibility and understand that it's important to partner together with the district so that we know we can create a world-class learning environment. I'm a little off because I'm used to having it over here, so I have to get used to this.
Continuous growth, Stephanie.
Yes, yes. In the next few slides, I'd like to briefly review some of the meal participation data from the 2018-19 school year and the other happenings that have occurred in the school nutrition program. This is a picture of some students eating lunch at Bridgewater Elementary. So, this slide represents how many meals have been served through May 1st at each level of our schools. Combined, we've served over 67,000 breakfasts this year and 340,000 lunches. Breakfast has been proven to positively affect the learning, um, in chi, in children in terms of behavior, cognitive performance, and school performance. During school year 2018-19, we saw an overall reduction in our breakfast program and participation of about approximately, approximately, approximately 17%. We attribute that decline in the number of kindergarten students participating in the free breakfast program because Bridgewater Elementary, they moved their students out of having breakfast in the classroom into having it in the cafeteria. And that was really to resemble what the other elementary schools were doing and to provide opportunities for those kindergarten students to eat with their siblings when they were coming to school as well. We have seen a slight increase in breakfast participation at the high school, and we feel that this may be directly correlated to the flex period time. In the past, students, the first lunchtime offered, they would eat at about 10:36 in the morning. And so, we found that students with the flex time didn't start eating until about 11:11 in the morning, and so they may have been hungrier, so they were grabbing breakfast as they came in, in the morning. Another contributing factor to the decreased participation in breakfast were the 11 weather-related days that we had. During the 2018-19 school year, we saw an overall decrease in our lunch participation as well. We saw this decrease at about 9%. One contributor to this, um, one main contributor we feel was the impact that the high school flex hour had on our participation. The schedule, um, we anticipate that we'll be down about 25,000 meals just at the high school alone for this school year, which averaged to about 160 meals per day. This, um, this slide represents kind of as of May 1st, the amount of lunches that we served. And you can see that the high school, this year, we served about 82,000 as of May 1st and last year we were at 106,000. And we do know that, you know, this year, we calculated based on 137 school days because of the 11 snow days. Last year, we had four snow days as of May 1st. This past March, we had our Minnesota Department of Education School Nutrition Review. It's an administrative review and they came from March 12th, 13th, and 14th. They spent three days with our program. The schools that were reviewed were Greenville Park Elementary and then we also, as mentioned by Dr. Matt Hillman, um, we have a relationship with SEVSEC, the SUN program, which is Cannon Valley Special Ed Program. And so, they also reviewed that program as well. The SUN program is for students with unique needs. Mitzi Holden, the Greenville Park Elementary Child Nutrition Manager, and her staff were very well-prepared, um, for the review when they came in. They just did a phenomenal job. They spent a day at each of these sites and then they also spent a day at the district office reviewing all of our, um, materials and making sure we were in compliance with all of the areas in the school nutrition program. And I'm proud to say there were no fiscal findings reported in our review. There were a few commendations that our reviewer gave as she went through. One of them were, was that students are provided with several fresh fruits and vegetable options daily. The other was that she can really see staff members at each site showed compassion and diligence in their jobs. I'd also like to mention that our reviewer had stated how impressed she was with the support and communication that she saw overall from all of the departments. She noticed when we were in the district office just how well everybody worked together with the program. She indicated that this is not something she sees and it's not very typical when she's out at other sites doing the review. And she was just very impressed with the relationships that have been built from the administrative teams, the staff, as well as the teachers. The high school flex lunch hour was developed to address the social-emotional needs for our high school students and to build upon a learning environment that meets their needs. It has been exciting to see students out in the building, enjoying time with their friends, engaging in various activities that they can be doing during that lunch period. These are some photos of some of the kids. This one right here is down the S-Wing where they built the high countertops for the students to sit at. This is in that corner in the S-Wing, just some flexible seating. This is in a classroom. It's kind of hard to see, but it's a group of students, um, who are, you know, I believe they were talking about one of the games, whether it was a lacrosse game or something like that, but they were all together in having lunch. And then this is in Mr. Whitney's classroom and where they brought in some booths and some really cool flexible seating and some opportunities for the kids to use, not only during lunch hour, but also to use during their class periods. the kids to use, not only during lunch hour, but also to use during their class periods. After implementing, whoops, along with the excitement of the schedule change came some challenges and concerns for the child nutrition department. One of the challenges that we faced was a decrease in serving time by about 34 percent. We had gone from three set lunch periods down to a 60-minute lunch period that was offered four days a week, and then on Wednesdays, we went down to a 45-minute lunch period. So with that decrease in time, we decided to try something new, and we brought in the lunch cart. And if any of you have come into the district office in the mornings, we had a breakfast cart where we would serve reimbursable meals for students. So we implemented this lunch cart for students, and it went really well. Our goal with that was that we would bring students, we would increase our numbers. We saw an increase of about 20 students participating in that. That doesn't seem like a lot, but really our other goal was to get students involved. And so we think we probably pulled from students who were waiting in line in the cafeteria and maybe frustrated because the lines were so long, and they were trying to get across the, you know, campus, we'll say, to get to a flex activity but just didn't have the time. So this way, they could stop and have a meal from the Raider lunch cart. We offer salads on the cart. We offer sub sandwiches, a variety of fresh fruits and vegetables, just like they would get down in the lunchroom. We really limited the amount of à la carte items that they could buy, but we do have a few things like chips or yogurt parfaits that they can purchase as well if they want to add that to their meal. But this is an additional reimbursable line, so all students are able to participate in this. The high school, I'd like to take this time now to acknowledge the high school staff. They were amazing through this. It was a big challenge for them, a big change, and they, with flying colors each day, you know, they faced a new challenge, and they've done In partnering with the high school guidance counseling staff, several certification programs were offered during spring break for all interested high school students, one of which was a SERF-SAFE class, and this, they could get their certification to become a food protection manager. This course was designed to walk students through the basics of food safety principles that could be applied in every food service environment, whether it be large or small. The principles learned helped to prepare them to make decisions in the kitchens. We do require that all of the child nutrition staff for Northfield Schools have their SERF-SAFE certificate. We thought this would be a great resume builder for any student who wanted to go and apply for a position in the food industry, and we're hoping that this is a program that more students will become interested in, and we can grow the opportunities for them. For the current school year, it was necessary to complete a revised budget due to the overall decrease in meal participation of approximately 11 percent. Now, that overall decrease is for breakfast and lunch combined, which impacted our revenue sources at the local, state, and federal level. So you can see we made a slight change here in kind of the revised budget for both the local revenue, the state revenue, and the federal sources. We also revised the 2018-19 food budget based on lower-than-anticipated food costs and expenditures due to the 11 weather-related days. And this year, we joined a cooperative with nine other districts so that we would increase our purchasing power with our primary food vendor. It was really difficult to determine what the impact was on joining this group just because of the weather-related days, but we do know that it certainly did have an impact on us, and we were pleased with making that change. The adopted budget includes revenues of $2,219,000, and the expenditures were $2,234,000. Due to the lower-than-expected food costs and revised revenue, we actually are recommending that we revise the budget and have a revenue of just over $2,920,000 and expenditures of Since both our revenues and expenditures were lower than anticipated, our revised ending fund balance for the 2018-19 school year is very similar to the adopted budget, as you can see there. We're projecting to exceed the maximum allowed fund balance for the seventh, or for the second year in a row. In January, we received a report from the Minnesota Department of Education indicating that our district's child nutrition fund balance was out of compliance because we're beyond, we're exceeding the three-month average of operating expenditures. So per regulations, a school food authority must limit its cash resources to an amount not exceeding the three-month average. So MDE required that we send them a written plan, and within that, over the last few years, we've really built up our fund balance because we anticipated that we were going to be making some changes in, you know, the buildings and planning to allocate some of these funds towards those things. Procurement of the food service equipment is something that we're planning to spend down our fund balance with. It was part of our plan. We're planning later, I'll show you some slides, but we're going to make some changes and updates to the high school cafeteria, the upper and lower cafeteria, and we're going to add in a recycling station at the middle school. We're going to add, purchase a new oven for Sibley Elementary. And then we're planning to also update technology in all of the child nutrition, kind of at the cashier stations and within the kitchens, add some monitors and things like that. In the fall, our entire child nutrition program will be traveling to Winona to participate in a back-to-school program with several other districts, kind of from the southern area of Minnesota. And we also know that we're going to have increases in salary and benefits for food service employees, in which we expect to see a 6.75 percent total package increase over the next two years. And we're also anticipating the need for additional staffing at the high school due to the flex period, so we're looking at probably increasing our budget by about $14,000 to add another staff person. And in prior years, we were required to complete the paid lunch equity tool to determine our meal prices. The Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2018 states that any school food authority with a positive or zero balance in its nonprofit school food service as of January 31, 2018 will be exempt from that. So I'm proud to say that, again, for the fourth year in a row, we are not planning to raise our school lunch prices or breakfast prices. So what is new and upcoming? As I had mentioned, with kind of our spend-down plan, we are going to be doing some updating in the high school cafeteria, both the upper and the lower cafeteria. The most current renditions weren't available to us when this PowerPoint, when we had it ready for the presentation this evening. So we are going to see some changes in the upper cafeteria where we're going to offer some flexible seating up there. Just like in the S-Wing, we're planning to put a higher countertop and some kind of plugging stations where students can plug in their iPads and phones and charging stations, things like that. As you can see in the lower cafeteria here, we've got some changes in seating. Not all the tables that we have currently are on this plan, but we will certainly be including those. We're making a change to the ceiling, so we're bringing in some cool ceiling tiles and some lighting. And then we're going to be doing some updating just with the surfaces as far as paint and some different wording and things like that in both the upper and the lower cafeteria. Our goal is to design spaces that are modern, innovative, creative, and flexible for the students so that it's not only used as a cafeteria, but it'll be more inviting for them to use as flex learning spaces. The middle school fax garden, this is something that's really neat. I don't know if you've had the chance to go over to the middle school, but I would encourage you to go into Lindsay Drager's fax classroom. With the SHIP grant, we were able to get three of these vertical gardens. And so up in her classroom, she is growing various things. We've got lettuces growing. We're going to do some fun cucamelons, which is a tiny little, it looks like a watermelon, but it tastes like a cucumber. We've got tomatoes growing and peppers, and so we're kind of creating our own little farm-to-school with a middle school garden. This is some of the lettuce that she's growing. This summer, we plan to use some of this produce in our summer programming, our lunches and meals, to incorporate that. And then she has taken some of it now and worked with the middle school child nutrition department. Obviously, we don't have enough to feed 400 students in a day, but we have been able to kind of feature some of these items for them. Farm-to-school, we continue to work with local farmers in an effort to expand our farm-to-school products. So next year, we're planning to work with a food hub called The Good Acre, and it sources produce from a lot of our local farmers here in Northfield. If you're familiar with Son Valley Farms, Seed Farms, Open Hand Farms, we've worked with some of these farms, but we just don't have the ability because they have to deliver to us each individually. And this provides an opportunity with working with The Good Acre because they're actually coming down here. They're picking up a lot of this produce from these farmers, and then we'll be able to have kind of a one-stop delivery and increase the amount of businesses and farmers that we're working with locally. We'll continue to work with Thousand Hills with the hot dogs available. We work with Ferndale Farms, which isn't listed on here, Fireside Apple Orchards. Most of our apples, we get from them in the fall, all the way through the end of December until the product isn't very good any longer or just available. Son Valley Farms, this year, we got watermelon from them, cantaloupe from them. So it's been an exciting opportunity to grow the farm-to-school So the child nutrition 2019 proposed budget. Revenue for school year 2019-20 was calculated by projecting actual participation for the school year for 2018-19, and we're assuming that participation is going to stay similar for next year. At this time, we don't know if state or federal reimbursement rates will change, so to be conservative, we're just planning that the reimbursement rates will remain flat for next year. Since we continue to be fiscally responsible and expect growth of our fund balance to exceed three months' operating expenditures for this year, we're proposing for a fourth year in a row that rather increasing our meal prices, we're spending those down. So the proposed budget revenue for school year 2019-20 is $2,108,400. So our expenditure summary. After consulting with our food vendors regarding the expected market, we're expecting or assuming that there will be a 2% to 3% food cost increase. In addition, we're expecting to have increased supply expenditures due to the increased use of compostable products for Northfield High School flex learning period, and updating the high school cafeteria spaces and planned expenditures per the Minnesota Department of Education requirements. To bring the fund balance into compliance will also impact our 2019-20 budget. The proposed budget expenditures for school year 2019-20, whoops, are $2,343,704. Just kind of a fact, as far as compostables this year, what we ended up spending in compostables, we purchased over 160 cases of trays, and so we spent over $5,600 on compostable trays. That's a total of about 80,000 compostable trays that we've gone through this school year. As far as forks go, we've gone through about $2,700 in forks, 72 cases. There's 1,000 in a case, so 72,000 forks. And we've gone through about 26,000 spoons at $1,000 total. So really, with our budget, our expenditures and supplies were close to about $10,000 on just the compostable We will consistently demonstrate good stewardship by analyzing information and prioritizing needs and managing our financial, physical, and human resources to support our mission as well as the Northfield Schools' mission. We propose that a 2019-20 budget with a total revenue of just over $2 million and expenditures of just over $2,300,000, we're projecting to end fiscal year '20 with a fund balance of $553,000. I know this seems like a big drop, but again, we needed to do that spend-down because of not being in compliance with our fund balance, and we want to put money towards improving or enhancing the upper and lower cafeteria of the high school, as well as looking at our participation. Our department goal is to maintain and not exceed the three-month average, so we feel that the fund balance maximum for next school year should not exceed $781,000. So again, we will be below that with the $553,000. So this poster was made, May 3rd was School Lunch Hero Day. It was celebrated nationwide. And at Greenville Park, our child nutrition staff were presented this poster by the fifth grade Companeros class. And two of the students in that class designed this poster, and I just thought it was so fun and it was so fitting that they are school lunch heroes, and I want to thank all of my staff for the great job that they do each and every day. I know they love and are very passionate about what they do. So, thank you. If you have any questions?
Excellent presentation. Thanks, Stephanie. Questions? Comments? Tom?
Do seniors get to leave at lunch and get their lunch elsewhere?
They do. Yep.
Has that always been the case?
Yes. Well, I mean, I can't say that it always has, but for many, many years.
As long as anyone can remember. Noel, do you remember?
I can't remember.
You know, and I think that, you know, some of the logic behind that is that, you know, for example, for our current seniors, in just a few weeks, you know, they're going to be off on their own, where they're going to have a lunch break, you know, at a job, and feel to have them have a chance to learn how to, yep, you can head out and do this and be back in time. I think that that's often been part of the approach. And I think also, if you think about the days before the lower cafeteria, probably also about space.
No, I'm all in favor of that. I was just curious because the 11 weather days that school was canceled. But last year, like, winter dragged on forever, and so maybe students were less likely to leave and maybe ate more lunches, whereas this year, the weather's been nice and maybe do leave. So, I mean, it's hard to predict what the weather's going to be or what the reasons are, but...
Yep. We did see that as one of the challenges with the flex hour also, because it's really hard to determine who's going to be eating. In the past, we were able to anticipate because they had a half-hour for lunch. We knew how many students would come and eat on a particular day when we had a meal offering. And with flex, it was really challenging just because, you know, if the weather was beautiful outside, we might have a lot of kids leaving for the weather. If the weather wasn't great, we'd have more kids staying in. Also, you know, the opportunities that were available to them out in the school would maybe limit them going for the lunch period, so if they had other things going on.
Which reminds me of something that Joel Lehrer was talking about, the half-hour schedules for the flex period, that some students would get anxious that they're going to miss that next time, and if they're waiting in line... And if they're waiting in line, so if you could work to speed the line up. And my son always says, if you had just one more person, like bringing people out or whatever. So maybe some of the mechanics or you were talking about hiring one more or two additional staffs. I think there may be ways to speed it up, get the kids their lunch, and get them to where they want to go.
Yep. The challenge we have with that is we have a pretty confined space. So even if we had another register, we would be able to get them through the line faster. But it's all of those kids that are in that one small area at one time. And that's why we've tried to create different areas for them to go eat. The lower cafeteria that they could go eat at the lunch cart out there to kind of spread that out a little bit.
Yeah, I just, first of all, we just need to really congratulate. She, 11 days lost to weather, a 34% reduction in serving time, and the Child Nutrition Department still grew its fund balance without raising prices in four years. That is not just good, that is excellent financial management, right? And so I think that that's something really important that we need to share. And I think the other thing is that the Flex Hour really did create some challenges for child nutrition. Never once did Stephanie ever complain about the pretty substantial challenges that this particular approach presents to child nutrition because, in Stephanie's words, it was good for kids and we're going to do what we can to make sure that we serve them. And so rather than, you know, lamenting, she said, "Well, maybe we could do something different like the lunch cart." And that was something that I think you put together in October, right? October or November?
Yeah, I can't remember.
Pretty early in the year. Yep, pretty early in the year. So I think that the Child Nutrition Department really has been an excellent model of our continuous improvement approach because it was not about, well, lamenting about what changes had taken place that had impacted. It was what can we do to improve to make sure that we can keep, you know, moving forward? And I think some of those innovative kinds of approaches were very helpful. And so I think there's been a number of things that have been analyzed. And I think adding some people for next year is important. But we also are trying to look at making sure, you know, what's the reasonable balance? And so I really applaud for all the constraints that you had with the Flex Hour. It wasn't about my department. It was about what do we need to do to serve kids? And I think what you see is some really great financial management to keep it going. And what you've heard in the addition of the new person for next year and then some of the additional changes that are going to happen in the high school cafeterias, another commitment to how can we make it better as time goes on? So I really, I just, I needed the board members to know. I serve lunch once a year usually. And what I can tell you is that when I served this year, the people there are working really hard to get, you know, kids through the line and yet still make a personal connection with them because that's such a big thing that our child nutrition folks do. You know, if you've ever seen those, our girls' basketball team every year, each student athlete gets to pick someone who's made a difference for them. And I will tell you, every year for the past several years, one of our child nutrition people from the high school has been someone selected by a student athlete to say, "This person's making a difference for me every day." So with 1,300 kids, there's some of those folks who know nearly every name. And again, that's, I think that's a really impressive part of this report. And so Stephanie is too classy to say, you know, all of the challenges that the department faced and how they continue to just evolve to meet those challenges. And I think the end result, you know, is actually really good comparatively. So I think there's still more work to be done. And I think that there's still more work to try to make sure that we can be as efficient as we possibly can. But I just, I can't commend her leadership publicly enough because it's been nothing but phenomenal.
Excellent. Noel?
I have a question, probably better addressed to Dr. Hillman. The funding from state and federal resources over the last five years is down approximately 8%. And the budget for the funding from local sources is down about 5-some percent. Is there a trend there that's going to cause us not to be sustainable?
I'm going to look to Val to see if she can remind us why we are seeing a little bit less there.
Usually, the revenue is more a direct correlation of the participation than, because the federal and state rates have not declined. They increase slightly each year, similar to the way our basic formula does. But it's more a direct tie to the participation. And so for instance, the switch between the local and federal source, if we've seen a shift, I know Stephanie did some changes to move some à la carte sales, which are a local source, to make it a reimbursable meals, to get kids some more fresh foods and vegetables. That shifts that a little and can make the numbers look a little different. But I would say the rates that we're getting paid have not declined. It's more kind of the mix and the participation.
So we're talking food service, so it's safe to say it's not apples and apples?
It is not.
Nicely done.
And I, sorry, can I just make one more point while I was talking? She commented about the decline in her fund balance, but I just wanted to point out that if we do the calculation the same way we do the general fund, we're still looking at a 23.6% fund balance projected to end, which is still extremely solid.
Absolutely.
Good. Nice job.
So I have a comment and a question first. My daughter always told me that the person at the line always knew her number as well as her name. So I assume they know lots of people's numbers as well. And my question is this. I know at some point during the year, the Flex Hour became more flexible and the students were allowed to move more. And I'm wondering if you saw an increase in lunches when that happened, lunches sold?
We really didn't. We, we thought maybe that, is this still on? We thought maybe that would be the case, but after evaluating, you know, each month and comparing from when the change came where it was an open full hour to a change when it was the 10:20, 10:20, we really didn't see a change in the participation with that.
Did it relieve any stress of the line?
Actually, it created more. So what happened was when we had the 10:20, 10:20, we actually had a period where we would be able to restock and refill everything and kind of clean up the lines. We had kind of a resting period, as we would call it. But when it's been that open hour, now it's just consistent. So we don't have the time. And that's why, again, we're looking at an additional need for a person just to be a runner, to be able to fill and replace those lines. Today, I was down there and at lunch, it was probably halfway through and most of the product was gone. And the people serving need to find time to be able to run and get the product and get it out there. So it's, you know, like our cold carts, our vegetable, because all of those are filled so that students have the same options that those same students that came through at the beginning would have.
Thank you. Great question. Robbie, you have a question?
So I was at the middle school last month and had a couple of lunches there. Really good. And I was really impressed by the kind of logistical feat of serving so many students in such a short amount of time. And as, for me, as someone in the line, going through the line with 6 million 12-year-olds, I was...
We should be getting more funding from the state if we have 6 million. We'll have to check into that.
I went through the line and I saw, you know, I got the mini corn dogs and the Brussels sprouts, which were good. But I was like aware of other options around me. And I'm wondering how, when you have such a short amount of time to do it, how students become aware of the other things other than the line that you kind of get funneled into like I did?
Yep. Great question. That's one of the reasons why we want to put monitors, kind of improve our technology that we have available so that we'd have monitors that are up. When they go through the line at the beginning, you probably didn't see it, but we have a whiteboard. And so they write down what's available at each of the lines. But that can be problematic because a lot of times as students walk by, they like to wipe off what it is or, you know, maybe other things are written on the board. So we want to make sure that if we have a monitor, it's up so that students can see it and it will provide, you know, opportunity for them to read what's available at each of those sites. We do also have it listed on the website so they can go and look. The salad bar has a featured salad every day of the week. The sub-line has a featured sub every day of the week that's listed on the website. But it's not readily available for them when they're going through the line. Ellen?
So I had one comment and then a question. And my comment was when I had read this, what really struck me was not just all of the work that I knew had gone into the Flex Lunch Hour, but the no fiscal findings piece. I knew that this wasn't part of your report, but you had also really sought youth input and like the DYC helped you with the compost video. And then the course that you offered. So on top of having to tackle this huge thing, you had these remarkable findings and then you were continuing to like stretch what's possible. So I was really, really pleased to see that. My question is Greenville, the new Greenville Park and the construction, like, do you have ideas? It was really great to hear about what's the next steps with the high school, but thinking about with the construction, like, what's new in cafeterias or food service that you might have opportunities?
Yep. We've been able to be part of the planning for both Greenville and Sibley. We haven't gotten to the small core group yet. Actually, I have a meeting on Friday at Greenville Park where we get down to the details with that. We're not planning on doing, you know, a salad bar at either of those schools or anything like that just because it can create a lot of waste that we see as it goes through. And we really have a great, at Sibley and at Greenville, they currently do the prepackaged salads and they do a feature each day. And it's gone over really well with the students. And it's something that we're able to control a little bit more. It's a little easier as they go through the line. And then they can always add fresh fruits, fresh vegetables from the cold cart line to enhance their salads if they want to. But so as far as any new innovative things, I mean, we'll be looking again at technology, having the monitors available. If you do have a chance and you go to Greenville Park, it was actually something that Kim Brisky helped us with. And the monitor that's up there, they have the big large TVs at Greenville Park. And it's a requirement of MDE that we post on the written whiteboards, what the menu's going to be. And again, those elementary kids, as they walk by, like to wipe off what's available. So they put it up on the TV monitor. And so it's up high, it's really big, and the kids then can read it. It's legible, you know, so that was something that was done with that. So I think we'll look at some more technology pieces that we can incorporate.
I think, Ellen, they're also really looking at what are the, you know, when you think about the cafeterias we have now and when they were designed and who, you know, how many students they were designed for. I think Stephanie and Mitzi from Greenville Park and Lori from Sibley have really been thinking hard about, you know, what is going to be the work, the flow through the serveri, as they call it? And what's the best adjacencies, you know, of the coolers and the other areas that hold, you know, the products? And so I think there's, well, you're not, I don't think you're going to see a lot of, you know, different kind of equipment. I think you're going to see some real thoughtfulness in terms of, you know, how can we construct the flow of students to be the most efficient, which doesn't sound very exciting, but actually it is very exciting. So getting the chance to build that from the ground up, I know that there's been a lot of thought about that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? I just had a couple of quick questions. We touched a little bit on the federal funding, et cetera. We know the federal legislation and the, some of the legislation particularly coming down in the past eight years and how that's affected child nutrition. Is there anything on the horizon that might be of concern to you in terms of conversation around some federal legislation that might be put in place?
You know, at one point, they were talking about the block grants, but I haven't really heard too much of that. That seems to have gone on the wayside with that. So that was always something that we were hearing about, kind of rumblings in the past. But not really anything that I'm aware of.
Okay. That's good. That's good.
Yeah, yeah. I know they did, whoops, I'm sorry. I know they did change kind of the requirements. They've lessened them a little bit as far as the whole grain piece. And the sodium levels, they aren't increasing the restriction for another two or three years. But, and then milk, they're now, you can get 1% loaf at milk in a flavored milk instead. But we've made so many great advancements. And I think our students are so used to that that we're really not planning to make a lot of changes and move away from the whole grain products that we have. Unless we see that there's something that really isn't acceptable by the students, then we may look at looking at something with that.
Okay, excellent. Well, I'm so glad that Dr. Hillman had the comments he had about your staff work and your work in particular. I mean, we talk about, we talked about one piece of it, but I think if we had to shadow you in any given day, we tossed out that reimbursables. But the matrix that you have to determine what's reimbursable and the sodium levels and the, you know, the serving sizes and the calories and everything, I think most people would be stark raving mad. And we can tell from you that you love it and you're passionate about it and you always challenge yourself to do it better. And so we're really fortunate to have you. So thank you for this wonderful report and for the fund balance and for, you know, every, you know, we know all the steps it took to come up with every single dollar and the diligence you did to create that budget. So thank you so much.
That's Val. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Stephanie. Okay, so we are on to our third report, which we have Director of Community Services, Erin Bailey, here to present the 2019-20 Community Services Budget. Welcome, Erin.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here tonight to present the Community Services Budget. Just to start, just to give you a couple of reminders of the principles of community education and a few highlights from fiscal year 2017-18. In that fiscal year, we did have 45,554 children, youth, and adults participate in a community services program. We also had an additional 48 children that attended hand-in-hand preschool by accessing preschool scholarships. We continue both last year and this year to have a free and reduced price lunch rate of over 50% in our hand-in-hand preschool program. Also, as you know, this year, we added one section to hand-in-hand preschool that was an EL, an English learners preschool section. We had 11 students at our highest. We are now sitting with about nine students in that class, but did have 11 students. So found that to be a very successful endeavor to have that preschool section. We also, for fiscal year 17-18, had approximately 122,000 people access district facilities through renting the district after hours. That also means that the district had people in facilities every day except Thanksgiving and Christmas Day for last fiscal year. So the facilities are very, very busy. We know we will see a little bit of a decrease in those numbers in this upcoming year as Canvas Church was one of our long-term lease agreements that have obviously moved into their own space. And then at the Greenville Park Community School, we had 861 youth attend that was elementary through high school. This was on a 212-student increase over last year. We also had 700 students and community members participate in programming and 140 received two dental checkups in the last school year. Also, 462 volunteers donated their time through a wide variety of programming. As a reminder, these are some of the programs that make up community services. Just to give you a little bit more of the structure of our community services, the Community Service Division has about 250 employees. And this does not include people or organizations that we contract with for some of our programming, specifically kind of in the enrichment and recreation area. As a reminder, the Community Services Budget is part of the O1 Fund and not part of the general fund, which is considered the O1 Fund. And then finally, as Amy is aware, Community Services does have an advisory council who did recommend the budgets that you're about to see tonight. This advisory council meets 10 times per year. Members are appointed for a three-year term. Amy is our school board representative on our advisory council. We also have two student members to the advisory council. We have a representative from the City of Northfield's Park and Recreation Advisory Board and then several community members. So first this evening, we're going to start with budget revisions for this current fiscal year. As you can see, our fund balance as of June 30th, 2018, was $581,457. We were originally projecting a negative fund balance or a fund balance decrease of just over $57,000. We are now looking at a decrease in our fund balance of 91, slightly over $91,000 for this upcoming fiscal year. Looking at ending this fiscal year with a revised fund balance of $489,000. Looking at ending this fiscal year with a revised fund balance of $489,967. Some of the major factors contributing to the changes in revenues and expenditures, I'm going to repeat what Stephanie said earlier, is snow days had a pretty significant impact on our division. The total loss for the, and we really just calculated, when we were calculating the loss for the, was for the 10 actual snow days, was approximately $35,000. This, what we have done, just to give you a sense in some of our programs, both early ventures and kid ventures, our policy is typically not to provide refunds for weather-related cancellations. However, 10 is a significant number for families who are paying for care that they did not receive. So we did consult with many districts around the state about regarding what they were doing in these snow days. And we did refund four days. And we refunded the polar vortex stays. That was the days we looked at refunding as kind of that once, hopefully, one-time phenomenon. We were very clear, this doesn't include something, this doesn't, is not a precedent-setting event. And if there was a future year like the current year that we have had, we would certainly need to revisit any policies at that time. We also, for Hand in Hand Preschool, did some refunding, the way it was calculated there, it kind of equaled to the number of days that we're having in June. So we will not be, we just won't charge for the cost of preschool in June. We added some time to our ECFE programming and then things like driver's education. We just aren't able to move through students as fast and we have, so we have slowed down in being able to take on more students because we aren't able to drive on some of those days, nor would we want to have been driving. Although maybe it's good learning experience on some of those days, but certainly challenging driving on some of those days. Programs like our enrichment program, it just so happened, we have two sessions of Prairie Fire Children's Theater. Both fell during snow days and so we had to cancel of, we have two performances every time we host a Prairie Fire Children's Theater. We lost one performance each time. So that's a pretty significant amount of revenue and ticket sales, too. So all that is to say, if you look at what we are projecting, our budget to end this year and where we're actually projecting, it's, the difference basically equals the loss of revenues from snow days. The only other change that you will see in our budget is the recreation program is now going to administer the Summer Strength and Conditioning Program. So this is a program that the district has offered for quite some time through the Activities Department. I think there is some benefits to offering it through our department through online registration and the fact that we are, our office is open all summer and can handle kind of questions and things that come up. So we are making that switch. We have already been taking registrations, so this does have an impact on both revenue and expenditures. So as we look to this upcoming year, our Community Service Budget goal is to work towards an overall fund balance that equals 16% of the Community Services Division operating expenses. This is approximately $485,725. Here's just a little history of our fund balance, just for you to reflect on where we have been over the last decade and where we are projected to be going. Some of the Community Services Budget assumptions for this upcoming fiscal year, for, on the revenue side, we are looking at maintaining revenue for fee-based programs and activities comparatively to the current fiscal year. We have adjusted our fee structure in our Early Ventures Childcare Center. We are following a structure that is actually very similar to every other childcare center in Northfield. And that is, we have adjusted the daily rate depending on how many days your child is in attendance. So if you are attending childcare five days per week, that daily rate is less than either four, three, two, or one. And again, like I said, that is happening in all childcares. It helps, what we end up happening, we have been very flexible for family schedules. When we take a part-time schedule, though, in order, we are always trying to match somebody else with that part-time schedule in order to fill a slot. And so that is one fee structure change that we'll be implementing starting this summer. We are also looking at the continuation of Pathway One and Pathway Two Early Learning Scholarships. We do know we will have the same funding for the next two years for Pathway Two. Those are the scholarships that are awarded to the organizations. We have already been awarded $52,500 for fiscal year 20 and 21. And that has been what we've been awarded for several years now. So unless something changes at the legislature, that will be our award for these upcoming years. And then also assuming that Pathway One stays relatively stable, too. That is the one that is a little bit more hard to predict because it is, those awards are awarded to the family. The family then is able to take those scholarship dollars and apply them to a center that is accepting parent-aware dollars. So that, and that is also, those dollars are distributed regionally and so it's not necessarily just a Northfield pot of money, too. And then, of course, we do have several grant applications that are still out. The expenditures assumptions that we are working on is that we've accounted for the appropriate increases in salaries, wages, and insurance. Included in that is we are working towards our licensed early childhood staff being paid similarly to the wages on the NEA Master Agreement. In Hand in Hand Preschool, we are going to maintain a full-time general education EA and continue with the Early Learner Preschool Section, which we've talked about here. The Early Learning Preschool Section, the one changes, as you have heard, we're going to move that to Longfellow for this upcoming year. And then with the, we just, we, as you heard, we serve a high needs population in Hand in Hand. And this general education EA has certainly helped provide assistance to all students, whether they're showing respectors or not. As I talked about here a year ago, we will continue to maintain an Early Ventures staff member for toileting needs. As we talked about when we were discussing what building would look like as we move forward, we did explore the idea of adding a bathroom to a classroom in Longfellow. It was pretty cost prohibitive, although I will state that is about $35,000 a year for this staff member. And what we really need is this staff member in order to accommodate the students we have in classrooms. We have some students who are not potty trained in a room that does not have a toilet. And so we have to have somebody that to not get out of ratio, that is able to meet those students' needs until we are able to move to Greenville. So we, in truth, that is an expense that is over and above what we kind of budget for each year. Then we are also purchasing laptops this upcoming year for all coordinators and site leaders. I think if 10 snow days pointed out anything, the need for our staff to also have those is very important. We will be purchasing those this year and then working to roll them into the lease next time staff leases for laptops are up. And so that then those devices will be maintained and we won't be any different than what anyone else in the district is using for those. And then we continue to have the additional expenses for kid ventures and early ventures associated with the childcare block grant legislation. So one of the new pieces that will be implemented this year, kid ventures, we were one of the pilot sites with the Department of Human Services, which was a great experience. And as far as kind of, we were a pilot site for learning how they are going to implement some of their new licensing standards that come under this legislation. And so part of what that will mean is we are now, this year, we'll start paying to have those as a licensed site, which we are required to do to accept the childcare assistant program dollars. So we have not had those as licensed sites before. They were never required for that, to receive those dollars for low-income students to be able to attend before and after-school programming. Other than some in-home childcare, I don't know that there's another school-age childcare program that is accepting county assistance dollars right now. So to be able to continue to serve those families, we are incurring some of the additional costs related to that legislation. So in addition to the licensing fee, there's also those additional fees for the FBI fingerprint and background check that all staff must go through. So the revenue sources for this upcoming year, as you can see, 24% of our budget is state aid and local levy dollars based on funding formulas established by the Minnesota State Legislature. With the census coming up this year, I'm going to also say, as the district representative on the Complete Count Committee, census is important. I mean, it's important to the school district in general. It is also important to the Community Services Division. It is what derives a lot of the funding formulas and how you receive these state aids and dollars. So we will do our best to be reminding people about the census and trying to reach out the groups that maybe are less representative in taking this, in completing the census. But as you can see, a large percent of our revenue sources are from fees. 67% of our revenue sources do come from fees. This pie chart just represents that. And then when you see the other local sources, as it states, that is, things that make that up are the City of Northfield's payment for recreation programming. That agreement, we are in the process of talking with the city that recreation agreement ends at the end of this fiscal year and we are in the process of working with them to renew that agreement as well. Also in that, other fees are things like advertising revenue for our brochures, sponsorships for little leagues, some smaller items like that. So as we look into our budget for this upcoming year, as I mentioned before, we are looking at a projected fund balance at the end of this fiscal year at $489,967. When we look at our revenues and expenditures, we are again projecting a slightly negative balance at the end of next year at $104,633, with a projected ended fund balance at the end of fiscal year 20 at $385,334. There are, of course, some variables in this budget. There are the actual enrollment, program enrollments, fee collection, and then, of course, grant funding. Finally, I do want to just highlight the Greenville Park Community School. Because this is a federal grant, it is actually in the General Fund, but is managed out of the Community Services Division. Some highlights of the community schools, the current, for this current year, we've had 159 kids that have attended community school 30-plus times. Our goal was 130. And this, I will say, this number is probably two or three weeks old now, so just, sorry, you're getting slightly old information this morning, but, or this evening, but just know that that, we have reached what is our MDE goal in our grant. So as you can see, for funding for this current year, our total funding was about $161,313. And then as you can see, for next year, we have secured what the district does contribute to the community school each year. We have also then completed, in mid-April, we did submit our 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant. We are part, it was part of Cohort Eight. We are successful that we did submit a grant for $124,489 per year. They have said it will be near the end of the school year. We should hopefully have some information if we were successful in that grant application. If we are, that has the opportunity to provide funding for six additional years. So with that, I will take any questions.
Excellent report, Erin. Questions, comments for members out? Ellen?
Thank you for such a thorough report. So I'm curious, I'm going to have you look in the crystal ball, not for next year, which is what you're looking at, but thinking about with the, as you said, we can't, until you move into the new Greenville Park. So are there things that you're anticipating in terms of, we know that the Early Ventures has been, you know, it's a high-quality program and sought after. Like when you move into the building, are there things that you'll be able to look at in terms of development for that? Or I'm also thinking you'll have another gym space for activities. Are there some things like paths, like looking into your crystal ball?
Yeah.
For some growth areas?
So I think as we do, I think what we need, what we will be talking a lot about this year is kind of that managed growth. So how do we look at growth as, you know, over the next five years, not looking to cover it all in one year? I think as we talk about specifically some early learning programs, Hand in Hand Preschool, as we sit right now, of the, not including the EL section, of the 144 seats we have available, we have 16 open right now. We haven't had a spot open for a three-year-old since the night of open house. So I think that is one area that we'll probably start to look at, how do we have some growth in that area? We also frequently get the request for a full-day preschool option. And so looking at what does that look like, too? And, you know, in which order do we kind of think about how that growth happens? Early ventures, Nat and I just had this conversation this morning. Childcare is a tough business, especially childcare when you're talking about infants and toddlers. They, it is, the staff-to-child ratio is low. There's a, the cost burden to families is high. And so trying to balance that with also knowing that is the greatest need this community has right now. And so I think that's what we're trying, that will be an area we need to, Early Ventures is certainly a budget that we're trying to get a better handle over. The benefit of Early Venture, we have great staff. They receive full benefits. That's not something that happens at a lot of childcare centers in Northfield. There's cost to that. We also haven't had any Early Venture staff turnover and most childcare centers are looking for staff constantly. So there's some trade-offs there. So I think that is one area we need to, we, I think we have a pretty good handle on what the community needs right now. We have to make sure we can make that be feasible on our end and how does that look when we get there? And we certainly know there's some things that happen at Longfellow that won't need, you know, that we can change up as staffing just because of the building and what's going to be at the new building. But I think there's still, Ellen, some things we'll have to sort out there. But I think we know we'll have some growth there. I think we have to determine what's the most reasonable way we can do that going forward. And then certainly, there's great extra spaces there that we, you know, haven't, I mean, we've always, we've had a gym at Longfellow. I mean, we have now a larger gym that could probably handle two things going on at one time. And that can be devoted specifically to, you know, some early learning programs in the day and then certainly have some opportunity in the evening as well.
Thank you. Great question. Other questions or comments?
Amy? Erin always gets to hear my questions, but I was thinking of the two theater performances that didn't happen. And I was wondering, with that program, is there a way to have like a rain date when you're planning them?
Yes. So with those two theater performances, we, they, the directors come in and they stay here for one week and then they're booked out at somewhere else for the next week. So there's not, I mean, the only way you could kind of have a rain day is if you did two in one day. And I will say, when we've had snow, they almost need that time to have a little more rehearsal because they've likely missed either some rehearsal in the week, too. And so it gets a little tricky to have, you know, to stack another performance in that date before they, the actual directors need to leave town for their next site and to have it advertised enough where people would know to come.
Other questions or comments?
I had a couple of questions. So I was going back to the site improvement plan that you have presented in September. And so a couple of interesting things that you had noted was you were going to pilot possible transforming students to Hand in Hand Preschool with Benjamin Bus. Was that able to be done and how did that work out?
So we did. We did that this year. It worked, it worked great as far as we had, our previous provider was, is not a bus company. And so it was, it was a long bus route for children. I mean, we were talking about sometimes children were looking at over an hour and a half to be on the bus to get to preschool. That's too long for a three- or four-year-old. And so this allowed for many buses to be able to transport students. I think it does come with a cost. And so that is something Val and I have had many meetings with Benjamin Bus to continue to see how we can do this better. This is another area, I think, as we look to going to Greenville, that there will be some continued opportunities to do this in a more efficient way.
Okay, excellent. And then, actually, I just realized in September, you were not here doing that presentation.
You were.
That's right, I just realized that. One other item that was highlighted in when Sarah Line and Breezy Barrett were here then was the possibility of having to purchase slots in community-based programs for special ed students. Have we had to do that?
So we have not. We have not actually purchased any slots as of this year yet. I will say, those numbers are also quite high for next year. And so as we, so when I talk about having 16 slots left, those are general education slots. So that would be 16 general education slots that are left for next year. I don't know the exact number of sped slots that have been accounted for, but I know Cheryl and I, in a meeting this morning, she just said, we are, we are at a high number for this point in the year. And that is part of, on a very good note, that the clinics and hospitals are now pushing that there is part of their early childhood screening is paperwork is filled out. is filled out at those clinics, and we are seeing more referrals from medical sent, medical facilities, and so that is really what's, what's pushing. Those numbers, I can also say, we finished our last day of early childhood screening for this school year in May. We had, one of our real goals this last year was to screen more kids at age three. So we, this year screened 20, about 20 more kids total. We screened, I think, 322. We screened almost 40 more three-year-olds this year. So we went from 112 three-year-olds screened last year to 160. So that's great, but it also means we're, we're doing our job of catching some things earlier too, which puts children into the pipeline earlier. So we will likely, that conversation won't be off the table for next year about what potentially need slots in other community-based preschools.
Sure. And then my last question is around the Pathway One and Pathway Two. Did we, were there dollars left on the table then for due to space constraints, or not having the, the space for students whose parents either wanted to directly access or we as a district have the pathway two dollars?
Yes. So that, I, is heavily written in our application. Because they award on two years of funding, I wanted, I was very clear in our application this year that, you know, in mid-cycle of this, we would be doing a move. And so there was the potential that we would have more space. Those dollars are, were, they were preset, the dollar amount that they were going to get. I think the hope is that the legislature would award some more funding in this area.
Oh, I see, okay.
That would be what would increase
Okay.
across, across districts, the funding level.
And then I realized I had one last question. So you're working on renewing the recreation contract with the city. How long are you, what is your goal for signing that contract?
Sure.
For how many years?
So I think, and we are really kind of just starting some of these conversations. It's going to come to you probably fairly quickly, but we, the conversation has, has been three years again.
Okay, excellent. Good. Well, thank you, and I think, I appreciate Ellen, you know, teeing up the fact that we're going to have this fabulous new space, and just all of the opportunity that we see here, and you know that your staff is just really itching to get into
They're excited.
a new space, for sure. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, excellent. All right, so we are on to our last report, which we have Val Murdistorf here to do what is new to most of us, other than Noel, would be a building construction budget. So exciting new territory for us, for we board members, sounds one of us.
Good evening. So, as Julie said, this is new to, new to me. It occurred to me while we were sitting in a meeting with our architects that I actually have to do a budget for this. It wasn't on my budget schedule, but here I am. So this is an exciting presentation, because we obviously are super grateful to be in this position. Our community was incredibly generous. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about the basics. The more exciting things are the actual presentations from the architects. This is more just the numbers, but, so just as the Child Nutrition Fund and the Community Service Fund are separate funds outside of the general fund, we are required to have a building construction fund that is a separate, isolated fund to ensure that we're tracking and using the funds appropriately. So it is Fund Six, if you really want to know. And really, the revenue is only the bond proceeds that we got, that were authorized to spend, and then whatever interest earnings that we would generate on those bond proceeds throughout the term of the construction. And then expenditures, obviously, are just the construction-related expenditures. So just as a reminder, I know everyone's pretty keenly aware of what it all covers, but a secure fund entrance on Bridgewater, and then renovating that current main office for special ed spaces, a cafeteria addition, and a music addition for Sibley, and then renovating the existing cafeteria to expand to the media center, new elementary school on the Greenville Park campus, renovating the current Greenville for an Early Childhood and Community Services office, and then renovating Longfellow for the district offices. So that's the total projected construction budget and estimated project costs that we've been working with throughout the process. So this is actually scheduled that Wold, our architect, had put together, they've been working with Knutson Construction, our construction manager, and they basically estimate based on our construction schedule, when, when they anticipate us to be incurring expenditures and drawing down the expenditures out of the building construction fund. So that's what this chart shows. And so you can see, I just included the months for our next fiscal year, because that's the budget that's required to be approved. And this is kind of what it looks like when you put it together. So obviously, we didn't have anything happening in 1718 that was required for this fund. So for 1819, you can see the bond proceeds are coming in, and then some projected interest earnings for a total of about $41.5 million, and probably about $600,000 in expenditures are anticipated, which is pretty much just architectural costs at this point. The other financing uses, this is the capitalized interest, so you might remember me talking about this with my debt service presentation. There was a revenue coming in of that amount, so basically, we transferred the money from the building construction fund into the debt service fund to help offset that debt levy, which is what we had promised the taxpayers that we would do with this. And so I'm projecting that this year, we will end with about $38.3 million, so starting next year with that. Again, some projected interest earnings for next year will be really the only interest revenue, or revenue that we'll see. And then projecting about $30.1 million, which is essentially the total of all those draws on the previous slide, plus a little bit of inflation, because I like to be conservative. And so we're anticipating ending with about $8.8 million at the end of next year, and that's really just kind of the cleanup final for those final projects that will extend over into the next fiscal year. And then that, I imagine, would be completely expended in 2021. So that's pretty straightforward. It's just kind of making sure that we're being responsible and good stewards in tracking the expenditures of the projects in an appropriate manner. And again, this is the first time I've had to do this, so I could be coming with a significant revision when I find out that it's maybe not going the way I thought, but I, I don't anticipate it to be dramatically different than that. The interest earnings could certainly change a little bit, but really, the construction progress will determine where the draws come and how that flow works. So, any questions?
Excellent. Questions or comments, board members have?
No, I think it is really straightforward, and it makes a lot of sense to have this, this dedicated budget, and again, for lots of reasons, but as you just mentioned, to be able to follow along and see how, how things are moving out. So, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have completed our items for report and discussion, so we can move on now to the approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a few items in the table file that were included in the consent grouping specifically, I know the District Youth Council members for the 2019, '20 school year, as well as some personnel items. So is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to items for individual action. We do just have one this evening. It was the approval, it is the approval of the Policy 900 Series, which I know was discussed at our April 22nd board meeting. So is there a motion to approve the changes to policies as presented? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Rob. Any discussion or comments on the approval of Policies 900 Series? Okay. We have a motion and a second, and no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that leads us to items for indivi, or, excuse me, items for information. Dr. Hillman, we begin with the enrollment report, which was in our packet.
Yes. So if you take a look at the enrollment report, you see that we are beginning to land the plane. Just give me one moment to get to my enrollment report, I apologize. Flying through the policy here. So as you look, that, of course, the number that we're always really focused on is that lower right number, which is the full-time only, excluding early childhood and part-time independent study students, and you'll see that we've actually increased a little bit over the last month to 3966 and a half. And of course, remember, the half is because we have some St. Dominic students attending Northfield Middle School for part day, so we, of course, don't have half a student, but that's how that is calculated. If you look at the total at the top, we're at 4195 and .5. So that includes those early childhood and part-time ALC independent study students. So you'll see that we have really stabilized, especially after January 1.
Excellent. Any questions or comments on the enrollment report? Rob?
I'm just curious, because ALC goes up from 59 at the beginning of the year to 147 now. We just had that graduation report, like, what is the possible impact of so many of this gigantic change? Where do they get counted?
Well, I think it's going to depend upon where they've spent the most time during their high school career. I heard Hope talk about that, so, and that's a newer piece. So a student who spends the majority of their career at the ALC will be counted as the ALC if they're here for a short time, and then they were to leave us, they would go back to the location where they had spent the most time as a high school student. Now, I think the important thing to remember too is that the Area Learning Center is not just Northfield school district students. In fact, recently, we saw that the, the total percentage of students at the Northfield Area Learning Center who are not Northfield students this year exceeded the number who are Northfield students, because, remember, because we're an area learning center, we're required to serve students who are outside of our school system for a variety of different reasons. So that, I think, is an important component, that some of the students who are at the ALC actually may, if they were to leave and go, you know, leave to another site, would actually be, could be counted as part of another school district's graduation rate. Very common to see, if you look at the enrollment reports over the years, the second half of the year, you do see an increase in the Area Learning Center. Number one, there are students who maybe at the end of semester may have struggled with some credits, there might be some risk factors, and there's determination to go to the Area Learning Center. Remember, the Area Learning Center has shorter academic cycles, so students are able to amass credits a little bit more quickly, and if there is some kind of issue that is preventing them from coming to school, they don't get so far behind, because a quarter is not nine weeks, a grading period is about four and a half weeks there. So that's really important to remember. I think the other piece that you'll see is that there might be some students who are, or not, there might be, there are some students who are enrolling through the credit recovery program, so while they may not be enrolled full-time at the Area Learning Center, they may be accessing something, what you would use to think of as night school, right? But now a lot of it is online Odyssey, where credit recovery, kinds of things, where a student is enrolling part-time at the ALC to be able to catch up on some credits, to continue on their path to graduation on time. So there's a variety of things. Could some of those students end up counting toward the Area Learning Center graduation rate? Absolutely. Will some of them not? Absolutely.
Okay, good question. All right, so we'll move on from the enrollment report to the pre-sale report for lease purchase. Dr. Hillman, that was also in our packet.
Yes, I'm going to ask Director of Finance Val Murdistorf to talk through the pre-sale report, please. And again, no action tonight, we're just simply giving you a heads up.
Yep, so I'm just going to touch on the highlights. So as you recall, as we talked through the purchase of the Gleason property that our Buildings and Grounds Shop is located, we had intended to do that as a lease purchase option, which basically means we're, we're seeking proposals, and the bank will give us the funds to purchase it. We've already closed on the property. We closed April 30th, but we'll be reimbursing ourselves, because a $600,000 hit to our fund balance is not, not really where we're at right now. And so this will basically just allow us to pay it off over 10 years, and then use the lease levy authority, which we've already been using to, to continue that payment, and then at the end of 10 years, then we no longer have to lease levy. So just some key points in this, the, this document, and the, they have a much more in-depth document that was sent out for seeking proposals. That went out last week, and they will be reviewing and evaluating the proposals on May 23rd, and then basically coming on the 28th, and then recommending which, which award we should accept, based on whichever banks made a proposal. The other thing on the preliminary information page that kind of breaks out the amounts and the tax impact and that sort of thing, if you look, the total principal and interest payment is about $36,000 each year. Sorry, for 20 years, I said 10. That is about half of what we've currently been lease levying. So we will actually be, have a lesser tax impact for, for the remainder of this term than we do currently, which is, which is good. We are always looking for ways to save the taxpayers' money, and so this will accomplish that with an end date in sight where we will own it and no longer have to lease levy. So that's just kind of a summary. Excuse me. We have closed on the property, and I know the, the Buildings and Grounds crew is very grateful and excited for that opportunity to own it and make it their own now, so. Any questions on that?
Excellent. And Val, one thing you always point out as well is when we vacate the NCRC space, we will have less lease levy as well, so really good news for the taxpayers. So, excellent. Questions on this particular report?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Amy.
I'm just curious as to why you picked 20 years over 10 years, because it sounds like you were thinking about 10 years.
Yes. So we went back and forth, and I'll, I'll check with them about that. I, I'm going to go off my memory, which might be questionable right now, but I think that there is a preference at MDE to have more than 15 years for the lease levy, just the way it's written and that sort of thing, and so I think that that was a recommendation that they made based on some experience they had with MDE.
I think it's, well, I won't, I'm not going to, I have a couple of thoughts too, but I'm not going to say them out loud, so.
Tom, you have a question?
So an estimated payment schedule, you have 20 payments over 10 years?
Oh, yeah, see, it is 10 years. It's, it's paid twice a year. Thank you. It's been a long day, apparently.
No, that's okay.
I really thought it was 10 years, so thank you for the clarification. So yes, it is, it's similar to the way our Sibley lease purchase, we pay semi-annually, and they weren't concerned about, we, the 15-year thing is a deal with MDE, but they weren't concerned about this one, because it was an existing lease levy that we already had. So, a little slow on the draw here at 9:10 PM, sorry about that.
It's quite all right. Thank you, Tom, for that clarification. Okay, any other questions or comments? So it, then, we'll plan on May 28th for Ellers and Associates to be back here and provide the, the next step for this report. Okay, thank you. So, let's see, the next, we are at construction update number seven.
Construction update number seven, and so I hope that you see how we are rolling with this, that we're keeping the original text going all the way back to number one, and then we slightly gray it out, so that you see that that has been passed, and then we try to use regular font for things that are new since the last report. So as we've talked with you, the project oversight committee meets once per month. They met on April 23rd. Noel Strawn and Julie Pritchard are your representatives on that, and that's again a group of administrators, folks from Knutson, folks from Wold, and then board members. So we continue to discuss that, and again, that overall organization and alignment of all five different projects. Also, want you to know that we have commenced a, we are getting the results of a traffic study at the Greenville Park site relatively soon. I know that they did that work, actually, and then we are looking for that report coming soon. We also want to know, very exciting, Bridgewater bid package was released on April 29th, and the bid opening is on May 21st, and so that will be actually in a classroom right across the hall from the district office, where we will basically take all the bids, and we open them up and tabulate them, and we will bring our recommended bid to you on open them up and tabulate them, and we will bring our recommended bid to you on May 28th. So, that will be exciting about getting the Bridgewater project started, because then I think you're going to see some activity at Bridgewater not long after the end of the school year, and really looking that we're going to get the bulk of that work done, especially the exterior envelope prior to school beginning is the goal. Then they'll be working on the inside of the facility, and really looking to shuffle the office over MEA break, you know, to the new, actual new office, and then they'll go back and they'll refinish that area of the current office into the special education space. So, it's moving right along. We recently completed the Sibley project core planning team, that was a three-meeting process. Again, core planning is really about, I think about it as big bubbles. You're moving bubbles from here to there. There's some really great work on the Sibley core planning group, and of course, myself, and Jim Colson, and Scott Santis, and Amy Gurwitz, and Julie Pritchard were your representatives on that, and some really great work, and some thought, a little bit different thinking. The original thought was to have two additions, and actually, it looks like it's going to be more cost-effective to do it all in one addition, which is a great process, so we're very excited about that, and you'll get an update from Wold relatively soon on how they're finalizing that. And so, we keep working, and we keep working through the Greenville Park user groups. You heard Stephanie talk about that earlier. We've actually hit at least every group once in terms of their user group at Greenville Park, and now they've come back, some of those groups have met twice, and it literally is, how long of a marker board do you want on the wall? Would you like an eight-foot marker board, or would you like to have some tack board and some marker board? You know, what does, they actually bring the elevation of what the casework looks like, and how wide and deep do you want the drawers? It's very detailed, and so, very exciting work and hard work, because you're really getting past, there's the excitement of the core planning group, where we're really looking at these big puzzle pieces, and then when you get into the user group, you know, it hits people that, oh my goodness, we're actually designing this thing, and now it becomes, I'm going to do, I'm going to be in this space for a while, do I really want the light switch over there, or would it be better if we did? So, there's some, what I would call a little bit of decision-making fatigue that happens as part of that, because you're really making a ton of very important decisions, because someday, someone's going to say, who put the light switch here? And, you know, they're going to look back at us and say, it was those people. So, really good and hard work, but I cannot tell you how thrilled that I have been with people. Just phenomenal process, really good thinkers, and they are able to all, work with all of us mere mortals who pretend to be architects, you know, and they are really architects, and they really do such a great job of including people's voices, so, very thrilled. So, that is where we're at, and as soon as we, actually, I've got it on my list this week, to get the Greenville Park renovation core planning group up and rolling. So, that may even start before the end of the school year. So, pretty exciting stuff. So, that's the construction update.
Excellent. Questions or comments on that? Tom?
Do you want to, Dr. Hillman, do you want to talk about reclaiming the, or, not reclaiming, but the fields on the west side of Greenville, so they're ready to go?
Yep, so, as you know, one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we really were thoughtful about is the new building is going to go right on the top of an existing athletic field, right, where people have played lacrosse, and they've played soccer and neighborhood games and things like that. So, on the west side of the building, on the side of the building where the Greenville Park Community Garden is, there's a small baseball diamond that will be filled in with grass, and then actually, it's, I told you, Tom, it was this Monday, but it's actually on Wednesday morning that Jim Colson, Sam Richardson, myself, Tracy Clausen, I think the FIAD folks might be joining us, we're going to be walking those fields on the west-hand side to actually, Tracy's, Tracy Clausen, our director of grounds, is bringing his field measurer and striper, and we're going to actually look at how many fields can we get on the space? So, that's one part, and then remember, on, still on what would be the northeast side of the building, there is a tar part of the playground that we're going to bring back to grass. Now, that may not happen right away, because we may still use that through next winter, but, so there's really two parts that we're reclaiming, you know, for that, not only neighborhood space, but also for athletic field space.
Yeah, I played baseball on that field as a little kid, obviously with the school
or two, but I'm just wondering, on the little baseball field, and then when, as you move, number one, how much of that land does the school district own? And then, is it marshy, or is it wet, or is it?
So, this is all existing play field. The key thing will be just really looking at how many fields could we actually stripe, and then basically re-grassing that small baseball diamond that is not used for baseball very much anymore, or kickball. So, you can still, you'll be able to still play baseball or kickball, but you won't have the dirt infield, and frankly, it's easier for us to maintain if it's all grass.
No?
I think there's a community garden on the west side of that property.
There is, yes.
Is that going to be threatened during the season?
Nope. It's going to stay exactly as is. As a matter of fact, we are, to answer your question, we own into the glow of the Greenville nature area, which is further west. Actually, a few weeks ago, I had a great opportunity to meet with some immigrants from the nation of Kenya who live in Northfield, met with them over at the Greenville Apartments, and they're really voracious users of the Greenville Community Garden, and they're very complimentary of the experience that their children have had here at the schools. One of the big things they were wanting was, could we expand that Greenville Community Garden? And so, we're looking as part of this, is there a way to provide a little bit more real estate in addition to what we're doing, not to sacrifice the activity fields, but possibly by going just a little bit further to the west with the community? Not for sure yet, we're looking, and we're also working with the city, are there some other plots of land that the city could help support some additional community gardening? In fact, I actually showed these folks the vertical gardens that was shared with you, because not only can you do those inside those, the ones you saw in Stephanie's presentation are hydroponic vertical gardens, but there are also regular vertical gardens that you can use that are out in the, you know, just, and they follow the normal process of what you would plant anything else. So, we're looking at, how could we leverage that to increase the opportunities for people to use that, what really, people really appreciate that space at that community garden? Unfortunately, at the end of the day, there is only so much room, and so, we'll be doing the best that we can to try to accommodate all of those needs, and these were not secrets. I mean, we knew exactly what we were getting ourselves into when we proposed the project on that campus, and I think we're going to be able to make a lot of it work very well.
Excellent. Tom?
We own a piece of land across from Greenville, right?
Yeah, we do, yep.
Could that be a community garden?
Well, I think it's generously called a piece of land, because it is, it's actually quite a narrow strip, and as Noel Strathwaite has explained to me, you know, that was owned by the school district all the way back to before Greenville School was there, and when Lincoln Parkway came through there, the engineering split our lot just a little bit, so we own a crescent shape, is that a fair way to say it, Noel?
What did you buy?
I'm not sure that there's any way to, I mean, it would be a very small plot of land to be able to, but I appreciate the thought process.
Yeah.
So, the field you're talking about, you just want to put grass on it for now and then divide it up, but what is the long-term plan for that field? I mean, is, and just with what you're doing with the, you know, old Greenville, so to speak, in the back, and then with the new, are you confident that you have the spaces and the playgrounds and the fields that you need that would be compliant and make sense with a new, you know, elementary school?
Yes, I believe that we're going to deliver what we promised during the bond referendum. So, there will be, there will not be as much field space, but we're going to be more efficient with the space on the west side. We're going to try to map out this week how many, how many fields, regulation or, not necessarily regulation, but how many playable fields can we get, because there's a couple of different things. We generally don't play games over there, but from time to time, our lacrosse team has practiced there, so how many teams could we get to practice there after school? And then in addition, we know that the community really uses that, you know, for neighborhood kinds of activities. So, we will maximize every opportunity we can there, but we are going to be limited by the space, just like we showed folks we would be, you know, during the process that led up to the successful bond referendum, and that's why we're doing a two-story building, so we can capture as much space as possible, and we know that we're going to do some work on playground kinds of things, something that's going to happen actually sooner rather than later. Principal Sam Richardson is already working with a potential playground company to be able to look at, how does that fit on the site, and we're already, you know, part of the processes, where do kids leave to go to the playground and things like that. We're also looking, we've had an interesting thing that we learned, that the current Greenville Park Playground is, it is certified for the elementary age level, and so therefore, we will need different equipment for the preschool children that will be there, because we're believing, we have, there's a little bit more checking that we're doing about whether or not it can be used for younger children, but playground structures are apparently certified based upon a number of factors, height being one of them, and then that is aligned with the age of the children, and there's a limit to how high a structure can be, and so, one of the things, one of the first things that we've learned here that we did not quite know is that we will probably have to do some additional preschool playground equipment, which we will work through, and this is exactly why we're doing these things now, so that we can identify these areas and address them as we move forward. So, playground structures typically, you know, are things that we work on earlier in the process, because you kind of know where they're going to go. The architect typically doesn't buy the equipment, we typically buy the equipment and those kinds of things, so we're working through those things right now, but we believe we'll have sufficient space, and I'm fairly confident to say that the new Greenville playgrounds will be better for children than the current Longfellow Playground.
That's a very safe thing to say.
Okay, very good.
All right, excellent. Thank you for those wonderful updates.
I think Noel has one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, Noel.
Will there be any change to the Low and Tree Nature Park?
Say it again?
Will there be any change to the Low and Tree Nature?
Oh, blown up. You know, we're not anticipating that at this time. The only thing that, which is separate from the bond discussion altogether is, if we're talking about a little bit more space for the, for the community garden, that might be an option to do a little bit of work there with the nature, but otherwise, there's not an intent to go any further into there.
Any other questions? Okay. The graduation information, I know Anita did send an email, but just so everyone is aware, the ALC graduation is Wednesday, May 29th, at 6:30 PM in the Northfield High School. One thing, in our table file today was the maroon and gold reception that board members are invited to attend. Unfortunately, this year, that does conflict with the ALC graduation. And then Sunday, June 2nd, is graduation at Northfield High School, and as board members, we should meet in the main office by 1:30 PM, and if anyone has any requests for specific diplomas they want to give to any particular student, get to Lauren Stofferson in the offices, in the main office at the high school as soon as possible, so she can be sure that she can accommodate the diploma distributions that you would personally like to do as board members. So, our last item, then, for information, is the Achievement and Integration Program Application Update. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, this is just a very brief preview that at the next meeting, Director of Teaching and Learning Mary Hansen will be coming and sharing with you the district's proposed Achievement and Integration Program Plan application. So, this is a, we've really been, we learned, as you've heard me say this before, we learned in late February that we actually qualify for this program because we are adjacent to a school district that is racially isolated, that being Fairbowl Public Schools. All of the districts that are adjacent to Fairbowl are eligible for a certain amount of funding. We should have actually been getting the funding for years, but an oversight at the department did not create the appropriate notification for us, so it's better now than never. So, we've been working very hard with a team of folks, and that team continues to grow a leadership team to identify data that we're looking at in terms of reducing the achievement gap, identifying strategies, and the budget that would be used to meet those strategies. That's what Mary will present to you at the meeting on May 28th. The one piece I just want to make sure that you understand, too, is that the Achievement Integration Program is a combination of aid and levy, and so it's a combination of state aid and locally-approved levy. And in general, basically for, it's about a total of 360-some thousand dollars that we'd be eligible for, and essentially, for every dollar that we levy, we get about two back from the state. And so, it is, it's really a fantastic program that's going to provide some services for us that we think are going to really help address some outstanding needs that we think will help reduce the achievement gap, both in the long-term or in the short-term, and creating some long-term strategies that we think will help us even further. So, just so you have the sequence, Mary will share the program application presentation at the May 28th meeting, and then we'll need to ask you to approve that at the June 10th meeting. And so, just the key thing is that I need you to be aware is when you approve that, that would mean that when we set our levy next fall, we will include that as part of the levy. Now, we will at the meeting the next time have the latest run from Ellers in terms of what that would mean, you know, as a tax impact to various types of presentate, just like you saw tonight in the pre-sale report. So, we do think that this is something that is very much worthwhile for us to participate in, and we've identified a lot of opportunities, and I think that it's going to also create, well, we know it's going to create some cross-district collaboration with other districts that also qualify for the program. So, that's just a very brief update. You're going to get more, it says, we used to call that the teaser, right, that we're setting you up for the next, it's really kind of a three-meeting. We're just sharing this very brief overview tonight. We're going to share the actual program application presentation with you on the 28th, and then ask you to consider approving that on June 10th.
Excellent. It's nice to see, give us the preview of what's coming is really good, and I know we'll have the opportunities when we meet one-on-one with Dr. Hillman, if, or board members that do that, to explore more questions. And again, we won't have to approve it at that meeting, we will have two opportunities to get that before approval. Okay, excellent. So, future meetings, just to note, wow, Memorial Day is coming, so that means we will meet on Tuesday, May 28th, at 7:00 PM, because of the Memorial Day holiday that Monday. In June, we will meet only once, Monday, June 10th, and then once again in July, on Monday, July 8th. All of those meetings at 7:00 PM in the high school media center. So, with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.